We've been talking, I've been talking a lot to face to face with students. Like I said, increased breakfast participation, being more visible. I'm trying to be more visible, my staff and I are trying to be more visible. Online free and reduced lunches, this was your question. Over 823 out of our 2,000 meal applications were submitted online. This is huge, guys. I was talking to KJ and Steve. We didn't have, usually during free and reduced, I guess time, which is before, like the two, three weeks before school, in that first week of school. It's Grand Central Station, kids are running around, everybody's, I mean, because when families come in, they bring grandma, grandpa, and every kid, all the kids that they have. I was like, I was getting nervous. And then I started pulling up our online applications. And it really, a lot of people, a lot of people are using it. At-risk meals. We're going to start at-risk meals at the Garden City High School, Horace Good and Kenneth Henderson. You signed the program agreement with us a couple of weeks ago on that. And that's super, super exciting. At-risk meals are free to everybody. These are going to be served right after the bell rings at those three schools. And we, there has to be an enrichment program to go along with these in order to do this. And so at Horace Good and Kenneth Henderson, we have the Big Brothers, Big Sisters programs, which are enrichment programs, so that bingo, right there. And so since we have that program, those kids can eat, plus anybody, any other kiddos can eat. We're, like, what we're seeing is the principal came to me, principals came to me and told us, it's like, "These kids are hungry." Just because you eat lunch, I'm hungry at 3:30 in the afternoon, then you have to go to practice. And I have a teenager, he doesn't think to put anything in his backpack before practice. So this, they're, they're going to be eligible to eat at this. The high school is a no-brainer. We have so many different programs that are enrichment programs that I feel that's going to be huge. Now, I'm hoping to start this, hopefully next week, the state has not gotten back to me. The application took me like a week to process. Whenever you're working with the USDA and all, and programs like this, it's a lot of paperwork. But the big thing about it, all those, all those schools are 50% free and reduced. So every child, week free. It is a no pricing system, okay?
So when will that meal be provided?
Right after the school call. And anybody, the only thing is, we won't be able to offer it to, it has to be after school, so it has to be after the school day. We cannot offer it to the bus kiddos because it has to be eating aid on-site. That meal has to stay on-site. But anybody that is staying there for football practice, volleyball practice, play, practice, night school, anything that's happening after school, they're going to be eligible to eat. If you have a kiddo that really doesn't have anything to do, but he's going to walk home, he can stay and eat, and then he can walk home. Okay? And that comes through a whole different meal pattern. It comes from the USDA, but it's through the Child and Adult Care Food Program, which is, it's, it's just a different program and different regulations. But it's a good program. Okay. This is what I wanted to show you. This is, I mean, this is what, like, August? And then we tripled our participation at Horace Good, isn't that cool? High school breakfast, same thing. I was just putting together, I've been asked to speak at a state conference in a couple of weeks. And so I was putting these slides together, so I thought they really showed how our, our students are actually really taking advantage of them. And finally, look at our free kid, our, our free kids. They're finally, it's like, hey, I need to go eat breakfast. So that's, that was exciting. Okay, here's my team board. Review of the policy. Did you guys, do you guys need a copy of the policy, or do you have a copy of the policy? The charge policy? This is the policy that we reviewed last year. And there are several directives that you guys wish for me to do. And so I'm hoping that I have the information that you wanted me to bring back to you. One of the things we did was during the administrative retreat, I did talk to principals and explain the charge policy. Did go over how important it was that we do have the kids eating that need to, I mean, that, I mean, if the child's not eating, let's find out why, okay? The relationships with the school nurses and counselors. I feel that, like I said, I have an open door policy. And I've had several counselors, especially at the high school and the middle schools. If it's like a teacher or somebody in the cafeteria notices that somebody is not eating, they are, they are talking to them and finding out why. And then the data for, I chose the month of September. I tracked alternative meals, alternative meal sales, the number of alternative meals that we've served, and the number of student, or the different students that we served. And I also tracked the cost to produce an alternate meal versus a traditional meal. As you've seen in my first slide, we are losing one cent on every, every, every traditional lunch, okay? So keep that in mind. The other thing that you asked me is to do a high school survey, which the results are, I think, really good. So, alternative meals. These are the amount of alternative meals that we serve at the different grades. And I broke them down into full pay and reduced, because a free child does not reserve an alternate meal because they receive free meals. For the full pay, we did 62 breakfasts and 33, 62 full pay, reduced, 33 lunch, 636 full paid lunch, and 347 lunch. In the middle school, you can read. We just did a few breakfasts. Well, that's because nobody was eating breakfast in September, we're getting the participation up now. Lunch, 126 full pay and 42 reduced. When Dr. Carlin was looking at this, he's going, "Oh, man, our numbers are really, really up." And so I started thinking, I was like, "Why could that be?" Well, number one, we, the kids love the peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, they really do. A lot of them would rather have that. We've added the fruit to make it a little more filling, so they get a peanut butter and jelly sandwich fruit and a milk. And the, and, and not so much at the cave through six that we see it, but the middle school kiddos, they are, they really like those peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. I have siblings, okay? They were in the charge, they went, they got in the charge. The sister brought money, but brother didn't bring money. And so he waited like three days, and finally the cashier goes, "Hey." And he goes, "I don't have any money." So she let him go again, she called me, and I was like, "Well, it looks a bit dusty." Well, sister brought money. So we talked to sister, "Well, mom gave us both money last week." Well, so the next time it comes to the line, the cashier goes, "Okay, just grab a milk." And he's like, "But why this?" He goes, he goes, "You've already, you've already charged three times." He pulled money out of his pocket and gave it to the cashier. So when, they, 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 they're funny, they're funny. So you kind of have to get to the bottom of, "Why, why aren't you eating?" But anyway, those are our numbers.
Was he saving for college?
Well, I don't know, I don't know. I think a lot of our middle schools, like Kenneth, Kenneth Henderson, there's that convenience store right across. We have kids save their money for that. Yeah, they, I don't know, a lot of them find money mysteriously in their backpacks. So it's, we don't have that much problem at the elementary school, but in the middle school, we do. We'll call the parents, or the parents will get the notice, it's like, "Hey, I sent money." I was like, "No, it didn't make it to the cashier yet, so..." Okay, now this is a very, very busy slide, and I apologize, but I wanted everything up there, okay? All right. So breakfast cost. An alternative breakfast costs us an average of 80 cents. A traditional breakfast cost is a lot more, because there's a lot more labor, and there's more food involved. It's cost us $1.30. Lunch, alternative, lunch cost is about $1.15. There's not much labor into, to putting the food in a bag, and the food cost is stable. I mean, we already have a definite food cost for that. Traditional, this is all over the, all over the gamma, depending on the menu. But an average lunch, the food cost, I budget around $1.62, labor cost around $1.63. So you can see it costs a lot more money to do that traditional meal. That's one thing about the breakfast, our grabbing goes are a little cheaper to produce than our, our hot meals, because a lot of times, sometimes hot meals, if you have it, if you have some leftover, unfortunately, we have to throw some away. But in our grabbing goes, there is no waste at all. Okay, so the state and the USDA gives us some money for those meals. Since we made them reimbursable, this is a good thing, they give us some money. So for a full pay kid, we get 31 cents for a breakfast and 65 cents for a lunch. That's for a full pay kid, so that's, that's good. For a reduced kid, we get the $1.84 for a breakfast and $3.25 for a reduced meal. So we're doing okay. We're still getting that reimbursement. What it costs for us, so if you look at the cost for an alternative meal, full pay, we're, it's costing us about 49 cents for a breakfast and about 51 cents for a lunch. Now you look at the reduced, guess what? It's kind of awashed. So we're getting, since we're getting 84 cents for a breakfast, it's only costing us 80 cents, then that's $1.4, okay? So that's kind of offsetting that, the paid, paid price, okay? If you look at the traditional meal, we are losing over about a dollar on every breakfast and $2.61 cents on every lunch. Now on the reduced, it's awashed with the lunch. And we're, we come out, we come out about 54 cents, I mean, from, with the reimbursement, okay? Does that make sense, kind of? So what this is basically saying, actual, for the alternate meals served, we're not losing any money, okay? We are, it's, it's about a wash. So for the month of September, it was about $434. But in essence, if we would have served a traditional meal during that time, we would have lost, we would, we would have been, lost $2,441, okay? All righty. So an additional cost for traditional meals is about $2,500. In addition, we're going to be charging those families, that's what we talked about before, we were going to be charging those families. So this would accumulate, this would be the accumulation of charges, about $2,200, right? So, and in addition to that, we, KJ and I have talked about, we've had conversations about this. It's like, you know, we're not talking a lot of money per, for family, but once a, once a family keeps on charging and charging and charging, where, where do you stop? Where do we do the collections? Once we start doing the collections, who's going to do the collections? My office staff, the staff, this is office, they, I mean, they, they are, they are busy. So we would, it would take extra labor hours to do that. And then if we do turn them over to the collection agency, there's fees involved with that. And only, KJ was looking, about only 20% of what is sent to collections do we ever, do we ever get. So I, I don't think, it's not in our best interest, I feel, to go that way. Okay, so this is another busy slide. So when you're looking at the numbers, I got back to the numbers, two-thirds of the alternative meals were served, were served to paid students, okay? Now, if they're a paid student, they should fill out an application if they feel that they are, that they should pay for their meals. If, if they don't qualify for the free and reduced lunch app, a free and reduced meal program, they should be able to pay for their meals. The USDA is very clear on this. They, they want, they want a paid student to be up to reimbursement. So my goal, which I'll never reach it, because they, I have to raise lunch prices 10 cents every year, but I can't raise it more than 10 cents every year. So the goal is to get the paid student price plus a reimbursement at adult meal price, at the total reimbursement, okay? We're not there. So our, our paid meals are lower, lower than they, they should be. But then again, I can't raise it more than 10 cents, nor do I want to raise it more than 10 cents. Reduced students that receive alternate meals. We are working, if we see a trend, we're keeping track of these kiddos' names. We know the kids that are coming through the line that are, that are getting these alternative meals. And so we are working with these families, and especially if the trend develops. If we see a trend, we have, we do have some families that possibly, you know, there's different circumstances. We look at it, and we're going to try to help them. If we start a traditional versus alternate meal, what would the incentive be to fill out free and reduced lunches? So if we're going to send, if we're just going to serve them a meal, we're going to miss out on some of those free and reduced applications. Our, the free and reduced status went off in September, the last week of September. And if we would just continue to serve those kids the traditional meal, we wouldn't get those additional free and reduced lunch applications. The other thing is, we want them to keep their meals in the standing. I, I, my husband has a business, I'm directly involved. I know a lot of you guys are business owners. And it's hard, but boy, when that collection, when those, that 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, you guys see them, and it's, it's tough, and it's tough to collect money. So we want kids to stay in the good standings, all right? We want the kids that, that can afford to pay for the lunch to be paying for their lunch, just like they would pay to have their settee taken clean, or to go, come to one of your businesses, all right? All right. Okay, so high school survey, I'm going to move pretty fast, and you can ask me all the questions you want to do. Okay, this is kind of fun. September 17th through the 21st, I just did it one week. My survey sent to all high school students. There were 629 responses, and the representation was pretty good. The freshman class was a little low, but we had 28% sophomores, 28% of the juniors, and 27% seniors participated. 55 versus 45 male, I thought that was pretty good. Usually have more females that want to participate. And then we had 32% of the kids were free, 12% were reduced, 43 were paid. And guess what, 13 of us, "I have no clue if I'm free or reduced." So that kind of like, really? I thought all kids would know that, but that was an eye-opener. I put these numbers down here to kind of compare. Right now at the high school, at the time, 47 of the kids, percent of the kids were free, 16% were reduced, and 37% of the kids were full, paid full price. So that's our free and reduced numbers for the high school this year. Okay, where do you normally get your school lunch on school days? From the cafeteria. 73.8%, that was, that's awesome. I bring my lunch from home, 21%. I don't eat lunch, 18.8%. The week of September 17th, I ran a non-participation report at the high school. Only 4% of the kids, free kids that were eligible to eat did not eat. Only 4%. 7% of the reduced kids that were eligible to eat reduced did not eat, only 7%. And then at the paid, the paid is 34% did not eat. If you looked at the numbers, I bring my lunch from home and I did not eat, that is close to that 34% of that paid rate. I thought there was a correlation there. Okay, and then I asked them how often they ate at school. Over 50% almost ate almost every day, which I was, I was very pleased. Did, do you currently receive free or reduced meals? Yes, 32%. No, I never did, 49%. That I don't know is 12%. If you're not current, currently receiving free or reduced meals, have you ever received them? And yes. And that, that was a little staggering. 46% said yes, but only 32 were receiving them now. So I'm not for sure if they didn't, if they didn't stand the question, or if that is the actual, actual way it is. I don't know. Again, we have the I don't know, and then the no, was 31%. Okay, I broke down those numbers. So the free kids that ate at school, 90% of them ate at school. The sack, 2% brought sack, 15, oh, 7% did not choose to eat, free kids. Why didn't they eat? Same way at Horace Good, why aren't they eating? Reduced, 81% ate at school, 12% brought a sack, and 8% did not eat. Paid, 62% ate at school, 24% brought a sack, 14% said they did not eat. I don't know kids. 60% ate at school, 22 a sack, and 18% did not eat. Okay. Now looking at these numbers. So I pulled those numbers out, and then I pulled out just these kiddos, their comments, all right? So I took all those kids that ate at school, and I put them aside. And these comments that you're just seeing now are the, are the ones that did not eat. So the ones that had a sack and ate at school, I pulled them out, and I just focused on the ones that did not eat, all right?
What do you mean by the ones I don't know? They don't know what, what they're paying for?
They don't know what, if they're free or reduced.
They don't know how they're paying for their meals.
And that, that was, that, that was an eye-opener to me. Okay. Reasons students are not eating at school. 100% of the free kids said, "I do not like the meals served at school." So 100% of the free kids did that. Paid students, and these are in order. "I do not like the meals served at school." "Not enough variety of items to choose from." And they could pick more than one thing, okay? "The lunch line, or the lunches are too expensive." "Long lunch lines." "Not enough variety." "The food does not look healthy." "I would eat, but no money in my account." "Special diets." "I hate the school food." "No bueno, because it's dumb." "Other students are ruining the lunch line." "I don't have friends to sit with." And some other comments that I'm not going to put up on the board. All right, so...
Let me ask you a question on the long lunch lines. So I thought we went in, don't we go to lunch at academies, so the freshmen go?
They're not in line more than five to, five to six minutes. So, and that's, you can ask Mr. Nordby, we get them through really fast. So now if they're at the, at the end of the line, the most they may wait is eight. The freshman, the first lunch is the, the longest, but they have plenty of time to eat, and we don't see long lines. I don't see long lines. I mean, I go up there, and they're, they're through the lunch line.
I'm bothered by that last statement, you know, that one kid said that. I wonder how many other kids think that, and yet say it.
What's happened?
That they have no friend to sit with.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Students are rude in the lunch line. They hate the school food. You know, that, that bothered. We have over, almost 2,000 kids at the high school, and he can't find somebody to sit with.
Yeah.
And that's just one student, you know, how many other students are feeling the same way? So that comment really bothers me.
I, and I'm just, and I, I put the data out, out there, I mean, that's, well, that was one kid.
I understand, I'm just saying, I'm just commenting, your survey that we asked you to do, so...
Yeah.
We need to find a way that students are making those comments, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, and I wish that no one, no one would say, "I hate school food," but I don't think I'm ever going to get off of that. But I'm trying, we're trying. Okay, reasons that students are not eating at school continue. I don't know students. I don't like the meals served at school, long lines, not a variety, not enough variety, free meals from home, special diet, I just don't want to eat. So that was the I don't know students. Okay. All right, so that is, that is, those are the results of the survey. One of the things that I have done at the high school, and I've had the principal tell me every shift, is I look, I mean, I walk around and talking to kids, and I see you have the kids over here, Mr. Carlin, or Dr. Carlin's daughter and her friends, they're over here, they all have their sack lunches. They have, we have six microwaves lined up, I think four or six microwaves lined up in the snack bar where they can warm up their lunches. That's fine. Kids, I mean, kids are picky, and if they want to bring their, their lunch from, from home, that's great. I wish they didn't eat in the cafeteria, but some kids just choose not to. Okay, and then you have the other kids that are sitting over there, and you go over there, and, you know, half of them are eating, half of them are not. I, you know, I, you try to drag a conversation, "Hey, can you eat?" If you look at their name mark, okay? I'm going to go back and see what mark they see, free and reduced. A lot of times, they are in the free and reduced program, they're not eating. So I'll go back and, you know, kind of question them a little bit more without indulging, I mean, saying like, "I know you're a free kid, why aren't you eating?" I had a set of, I, there was five girls at a table, and not one of them was eating. So I went up to them, and I was talking to them, and they're like, "We've never ate. We never ate in elementary school, we never ate in middle school, we just don't eat." We just don't eat. Okay, I went and I looked back, four of them were free and one was reduced. I don't know how to get to those kids. I don't know if they're, you know, we want to feed them, we want to feed every kid, especially the, you know, and I don't, I don't know the answer. We are working on a quality improvement, like I said, I'm going to go visit OLEFA. They have what's called a power hour lunch, which is a little, it's an alternative lunch, where the kids basically, I, I don't know a lot about it, but it has increased their lunch participation. For those kids that may not have somebody, they would have a place to go and a group of kids to eat with. So I'm excited to see that. And, and just to see what kind of options there were, how their lines flow, how many of their cafeteria is. So I'm really excited about that.
How long do they have to eat?
Oh, boy, you asked that, 20 minutes, 22 minutes?
Is that the same as the middle schools? And are the line wait time about the same, or is it...
It's actually a little longer than middle schools, especially at Horace Good, where we have three times as many kids trying to get those to the line than KJ.
So they're not getting quite as much time to sit down and eat.
Right. I would say Horace Good would, would be the least amount of time we have. But we have tried, but at Horace Good, we added another food bar, so they can, like, when they get there, like, we have four people serving, and then they go through, go through the two food bars. And we're looking at to get some more food bars to make that work better. All right, that was a lot to say, and I'm sorry I talked too fast, but...
A lot of good information.
Yeah, I just, I, do you have any questions? I, I know you guys have kids or have had kids in, in school. I don't, like, especially at the high school, you know, kids will point blank tell me they don't like it. And I even take in some kids, it's like, okay, I know, you know, I know these little kids, and they're like, "You show me their salads, or this, well..." And then you take them in, they're like, "Well, you know, well, whatever." So I, you know, I want to know, we want to serve food that kids want to eat, and we want to serve all kids.
Sounds like you've got some exciting ideas, and we'll incorporate as well, to sort of always building and improving.
And I want to thank the middle school principal, especially Brad. I mean, we, we worked especially on your breakfast, I want to thank you. I mean, I couldn't do it without their support. And it's been fun. I know a lot of the, some of the elementary principals are thinking about doing different things. So we're not, we're not perfect, and I know we're not, but I, we definitely want to get close to perfect in what they're, do you have any questions?
Anything, Margaret?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Do you have one too?
Just a question and a comment. So just so I understand the at-risk meals that you talked about. So any kid that, the bell rings and they're still at school, they're going to be able to get a meal free? No matter who they are.
Now, you can't come with a good thing. But now anybody under the age of 18, you can come and get a meal.
KJ?
Now, I just wanted to thank you, I'd really like the idea of that second breakfast type. I think it allows students who maybe weren't hungry earlier or weren't too busy with some of their activities to eat.
I found out it was a very social time. That's their time to, to be with their friends and...
Yeah, I love the second breakfast idea. I hope that somehow, though, we can allow maybe a little extended period of time in that passing time, just to add a couple of minutes at that point, so that these students don't all come back late to, after the next class.
And that's one reason we're moving to academies. And if it continues to increase, what we would do is, we went, the freshman academies are farther than the trades academy, so the next, the next one we would go down is to the trades. But the freshman, it is working really well. We do need, one thing that we are looking at too is getting a touchscreen, because it's fast. I mean, we've got, we're looking at to get a touchscreen computer down there, so it's, so we can get those screens faster. Because they want to have respect and teachers' time too.
I did have a question, though. How much, do you have a sense of how much waste there is? Are students throwing away half their lunch because they just didn't have enough?
Oh, yeah, I, I cringe at the high school. One of the USDA policies is they have to have a pack of prepared vegetables on their plate. So what have we done? What we've done is, we have the food, vegetables in the middle, and we also have gotten where we have the fresh fruit, like at the cashier's stand where they can grab it, which has worked out really well, a lot of the kids eat it, but we throw away a lot of money, a lot of money. One of the teachers, and I know her outside of school, and I mean, she was just sick, and I was looking at the kids just throwing away their, like, coming out of the cafeteria and throwing away perfectly, wonderful peaches. And so, and one of the things that we should, we should talk about is like, it's sealed, and, you know, the whole group is not in into, we have possibly seen what we can do, like as far as like Namaa's house. They just, it's, it would be like transportation, I mean, it's, in doubt, it would be pretty involved, but we are looking into, because I hate that wasteful, especially at the high school. At the elementary levels, I don't think we have it as much as at the high school, I know we do.
But is there waste because they didn't have time to eat something? But is there waste because they didn't have time to eat something? They wouldn't eat it, they'd have more.
No, they, you know, like I says, it's just, a lot of them just come out and, because we make them take it, and I think, I, maybe it's a rebellion, maybe it's way, or maybe, I don't know, we're a bunch of, but a lot of them just, just throw it away. Look, if you watch them, they'll just take it and throw it, it's like, "Oh, my gosh, that is..." You know, and I'm thinking to myself, like, a fresh peach is forty-nine cents, like, it's a delicacy, and they're throwing it away.
So we can't have a basket, but still good food.
We could, but we can't re-serve it. Due to health code standards, we can't re-serve. Once it, once it's on their tray, we can't re-serve it. Uh, we can't have a share table. It works at, it works at, um, like, the elementary schools, and, but it doesn't, like, the high schools, they don't really go, they don't go back, I mean, back to the share table. So, but we are, we are looking at that, because that's, that is one of my, um, I don't like that.
The, the other thing I, I wanted to, to bring up is that I think we need to look at lunches more than just, you know, eating. I think, you know, um, what Tim was looking at, you know, somebody who doesn't eat because there's, there's no one to really sit with. There, there's, there's other aspects to lunches, a social time, or a time to either be vulnerable because you don't have anyone to sit with, or, um, you're kind of spending all your time socializing, so you're not eating. We, maybe we need to, to look at, at other aspects of lunch besides the eating part.
What socialization?
What would that fall, I mean, I don't feel like it falls on the nutrition specifically.
It doesn't really, but I think it, also, there's something in your counselors, or there's, or, it's, it's, yeah, it's looking at. I think, you know, I think a more relaxed setting, um, and we're getting there. It's a lot better than when I started twenty years ago, you used to, you sit down, shut up, and eat. Now it's, it's a lot more, um, a lot more conversation, I see a lot more. You know, at an elementary school, they, they all have different ways of saying, "Okay, it's time to," you know, your quiet voices, and, um, but I'm seeing a, a lot more, a lot more teachers sitting down. I mean, that helps a lot, the, the schools that the teachers sit down and eat with the kids, especially elementary, that helps a lot.
Tim, did you have something else to cover?
Just, just a couple more comments. Thank you for doing the survey at the high school. I wasn't criticizing you on the conference.
No, no problem.
Just letting, you know, it's in there. Thank you for finding other ways to get parents to fill out that free and reduced application. I know it's a struggle for you, um, you know, keep working at that. I, I was at a community, uh, lunch last Friday, and Harvest America spoke up and said that they actually have funds that they can help kids that are even on free and reduced lunch to give them money to pay for meals, so, uh, you might visit with Sabrina Maldano, I believe is the director there, to find out how those funds could happen through the school. A lot of good information you provided, thank you for putting that policy and tweaking that. You know, because that, I think that was our concern, is, you know, not pointing out a kid that was, you know. They, they have enough struggles in their life to say, "Hey, you want to eat that, I'm paying the bill, and you can't eat no more."
Yeah, yeah.
So you're doing some unique things, and I thank you for that. I, I appreciate your presentation, a lot of good information, because, you know, a lot of people don't understand the school lunch part. I just want to comment, I eat lunch at, at Bernadine Siz and Charles Stone, and, you know, when I eat with those kids, it was, they don't want to eat, they always share with the friends, so it is different. I think in fifth, sixth grade, probably in the elementary level too, than it is as they get older, but, you know, they don't. Hey, I don't like this, yeah, you can have it, you know.
Well, at the middle school, sometimes the, the football players will stand by the trash can and get everything that the girls don't eat, and they're like, "Oh, God, don't do that." But, you know, it's just, that, that's the, that's, that's the age of the kids, and I enjoy what I do, I enjoy your support, and I thank you. And please, if you ever want to come, it's on me, come meet, we'll go to whatever school you want, and we'll have lunch.
Of you, next time we see you at a board meeting, and particularly at this late hour, might consider some grabbing those.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The same thing, I haven't had stuff for yet.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Wonderful information, by the way. Even though it gets us late into the evening, that is just super important, I appreciate it. Uh, okay, I think we're ready for our unfinished business for G two, middle school cheerleader proposal. And so, I think, basically, of course, the recommendation is to approve, that is recommend, uh, recommended for approval by staff. We had a little discussion at the last board meeting, we had a motion and a second, and we're at that point on the table, uh, of discussion before vote. So, uh, let me just do it this way, why don't we just?